Good evening, I have called to order the regular meeting of the Perry Municipal Authority at February 3rd, 2020 at 6:15, roll call please.
Colar, Bond.
Here.
Delbeck.
Ahern.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
White.
Morel.
Here.
White.
Here.
Strowler.
Here. I do declare a quorum, barely. Ah, Ahern, would you give the invocation?
Sure, will, Mayor, thank you. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight to give you honor and praise. You are the source of all of our blessings and we thank you for every gift that we have been given. We thank you for the opportunity to come and gather together tonight. We ask for your hand of blessing on this meeting. We would ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work and our goals tonight and beyond. Amen.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one is the consent agenda. There's one item, item A, to receive and approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Bond.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Morel.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes.
This is cute.
Item four, comments from those assembled pertaining to the PMA. Seeing none, we'll go to item five, proclamation, commendation reports, and inquiries by the governing body. Seeing none, we will go to item six, any new business? Seeing none. Item seven, adjournment?
Move to adjourn, second.
Roll call please.
Bond.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Morel.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes. Thank you, Authority members. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting in the City Council of Perry, February 3rd, 2020, at 6:17. If you're ready, roll call please.
Colar. Bond.
Here.
Delbeck.
Ahern.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
White.
Morel.
Here.
White.
Here.
Strowler.
Here. Thank you. The consent agenda, we have two items on the consent agenda this evening.
Motion to approve both items, second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Bond.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Morel.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes. Item number four, comments from those assembled pertaining to the City Council meeting this evening. Seeing none, item five, proclamation, commendation, reports, and inquiries by the governing body. Seeing none of those either, we will move to the City Manager's remarks.
Thank you, sir. The City Manager Messenger started off his edition with two items regarding the Heartland Fire under administration. There's a more extensive synopsis of that meeting in front of you, called Passenger Rail Luncheon, which City Brother David Payne and former City Councilman Jim Franklin, who have been involved in this project for a long, long time, prior to me at least, were able to attend, and I appreciate them for making the trek up to Pecos. What is most troubling about this, not today, but for the future, something that we should take into consideration as we get closer to our planning session on the 24th, is the second page, second paragraph, where it mentioned recent legislation that will allow increasing train lengths to three and a half mile.
This is ridiculous.
I won't depress you with the rest of what's in there, but it is something that we do need to be cognizant of, and something that will certainly impede and impact the service delivery of our public service and first responders, folks. Also, beginning to the end of this week, the City will be starting an effort with social media regarding Census 2020. There's a number of different organizations, or the Census Bureau is taking care of a lot of that stuff that individuals used to have to do, and cities used to have to do years ago. So what we're going to do is to simply conduct the social media campaign through our resources, helping Dixie and Tyson, and I will also be, former Councilman Brett Nation, who will talk to other organizations such as Ministerial Alliance, Rotary Club, other organizations that can help us get out the word that everyone needs to be counted. April 1, the 2020 Census begins in earnest with mailers. Again, this is from the Census Bureau, the City's not doing any of this. Also, in front of you are some talking points that will help you inform your citizens and your ward about the importance of this, and I've talked to Gloria about it, we'll be putting something out there in the paper over the next couple of weeks. We have two full months to do this, and I know some organizations, some cities have been doing this since last year. We're a small city, and sometimes you hear the message over and over and over, and you tune them out. So I wanted to make certain that we get closer to the actual April 1 target date. Any questions or anything?
Larry, would you have more of these, if you could put in businesses and things like that?
Yes, sir.
And we'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, be happy to do that. Okay. Thank you, Council.
Any questions? All right. Thank you, Larry. We'll move on to item seven, consider soliciting for a civil engineering service proposal and appoint a member of the governing body to become a member of the committee. I asked Bryce if he would put this together for us. Dr. Blaine Reilly is kind of our civil engineer that we use now. Blaine is, sometime back, he's moved to California, and he's not around this area very much. And sometimes there's a need for us to have the engineer come to our city to look over things and see what we're talking about, and kind of oversee some things here. And being Blaine is now in California, it's really difficult to get that service out of him. So I would like to put an RFP out to solicit proposals from other companies that would like to be a part of our organization here, and that's what this is. And also, there will be a committee that will consist of myself, and Larry, and Dixie, and one council member to review these proposals. And I did ask Danette if she would be interested in doing it. She didn't really reply to me for sure, but...
Happy in this one.
Guilt guilt you into a little bit. So anyway, that's what we're asking for this evening, for us to be able to go out and solicit the RFP for a new civil engineer.
Well, I'll make a motion on the first part, but I'm not making any recommendations for the committee member. We could do, we could recommend somebody that's not here.
Yeah.
Teach them a lesson.
I don't think we'll do that either. I'll do the first part. I'll make a motion that we solicit RFPs for a civil engineering firm to work with the city.
Second.
Any discussion?
So the committee, they would review all the proposals that are turned in, and then they would come with their single recommendation versus maybe a top two or three or whatever?
Yeah, we'll put together what we think, if there's, you know, two or three that's pretty equal, we can bring it to the council. We just need to review them and make sure that they've met all the criteria.
The council has the right to see, the council has the right to see all of them. If you want to see all of them, provide all of them. We're just hoping to have a committee to review them, and of course, the council can review whatever documents come in. So you just have to make a request, or we can provide them to you.
I don't have a problem either way. Dixie brought up a good idea. I mean, if we chose, we could have them come make a presentation, but that can get pretty lengthy sometimes. I've been involved in that before. Could you imagine having six of Bryce up there talking?
Every meeting.
Only thing better than that is when you have him and Russ both on a whole.
Well, luckily, luckily, it's just been one or the other.
I know. You told Russ last time, he can't come back, he has to send you to talk too much.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Bond.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Morel.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes. Thank you, Council. Item number eight, consider approval of the grant agreement with the...
We didn't get a person.
Well, I asked, do we have to have a motion on that?
Well, I don't know. Either that, or she has, somebody has to volunteer.
Well, she did, didn't you?
I said I would. No, no, I didn't catch that. I'm going to get that in a minute.
Awesome. Thank you, Danette.
I apologize.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Item eight, consider approval of the grant agreement with the Malzahn Family Affiliated Fund of Oklahoma City Community Foundation. This is the Malzahn Fund that we've been talking about for some time. Myself, and Larry, and Jamie settled that committee. They approved us for $520,000 and some change before the end of the year, and we brought that agreement to you, but there were some things on there that we didn't feel like were priorities anymore. So this is a new list that the three of us have all gone over, and have agreed, these are our priorities at this time. And so we would just like to ask the council to approve this priority list, this grant agreement. When I talked to Nancy Anthony, she's the foundation lady that is represented on our committee, she asked me to bring a list that the council would approve with the agreement. So we just need an approval, a motion of approval on the grant agreement.
Is this the one where we are supposed to have the school resource officer?
Yes.
And the school resource officer is it listed on?
Yes. We have reached an agreement, hopefully tonight, which, we brought that agreement to you guys.
Right.
A couple, two, three weeks ago, or a month, I don't remember how long it's been now. But I talked to Russ about that, and Russ said we could just play that out of our budget. It's like, it's $12,000 and some change, I don't remember the exact amount right in front of me, but...
And his reasoning was really because he was already a salary in Florida, where he was anyways, and so we didn't have to go above and beyond to pay that out of our budget and the school budget.
And plus the school, yeah, plus the school was paying half of that, so...
For the spring, so, okay.
And we also made it so that it was based upon the number of student days, not just half of whatever we're paying for all the time. So that reduces the cost.
I will point out in here, there is a, on page three, the next page from where the grant started, up at the top, where it talks about fire. We have another agenda item coming up here in a minute, $20,000, $21,000, I think it is, and some change, $21,042 for the fire trucks. And I talked to Russ about that, and he said that we could pay the $1,041, but we did put the $20,000 in this agreement to be reimbursed. Any questions?
So those repairs have already been done?
Yes, ma'am.
I feel like I was on the committee, that should be somebody else.
Well, it's an easy motion to make. Great appreciation to you guys at the Malzahn Foundation, but I'll make a motion to approve the grant agreement as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Roll call please.
Bond.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Morel.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes, thank you very much. Item number nine, consider approval of resolution number 2020-01, approving participation in the Oklahoma Municipal Alliance Mutual Aid Agreement. This, the way I understand it, this organization used to be called MISO, and now they've changed their name to Oklahoma Municipal Alliance. And it's a mutual aid agreement, there's a couple agreements that, say that we need mutual aid, if we have a tornado or something come through here and knock down our power lines, it's the organization that will send crews from other towns to come in here and help us, and vice versa. If someone else needs aid, and we have a crew available, we will send aid to them. And part of it's for electric, and then the other part is for other type of assistance. It's all under the same resolution.
Motion to approve resolution 2020-01, second. Mutual aid.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Bond.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Morel.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes. Thank you. Item number 10, consider approval of change order number five to the 2018 Street Improvement Contract with Evans and Associates Construction Company in the amount of $10,191, providing for certain street repairs at Sixth and Delaware. Okay, in your background, it talks about, and I'll just tell you how it happened, in Dixie and Bryce, or someone told me the story, so it didn't come from me, but Chuck came in, Chuck Hall came in, and the crosswalk between Foster's and Exchange Bank is really bad. Potholes, and they've patched the holes, and so I went down there and looked at it, and it is pretty bad. And so they have both agreed to put up $3,000 apiece, Foster's and Exchange Bank, to fix the crosswalk, and our, the estimate on it was $10,191, so we have to come up with $4,000, a little over $4,000 to fix that crosswalk. And I thought it was very nice of the Foster's organization and Exchange Bank to kick in that money so we get that crosswalk fixed. So that's what we're asking for, the change order is for, is that project.
Could I ask something semi-related to that?
Yeah.
What about Delaware back to the east as you go towards Seth Wadley? That crosswalk is kind of where it all ends in terms of just being in very poor condition. I mean, this needs to be done. I'm just wondering if there's ever any discussion about that. If you drive towards Seth Wadley, I mean, you drive west from Seth Wadley, you end up at that crosswalk, it needs to be fixed, but that road needs to be fixed too, at some point.
Correct, if I may, Mayor. We had talked about, Evans and Sam Harmon and I had talked about redoing that section that you're talking about to Fifth Street. The problem with that is, this is not a simple fix, and it would certainly impact Seth Wadley's business. So we've kind of put that on a back burner until they open their other facility, and at that time, then they won't have quite the traffic that they do now, and it would be less impactful on them.
Okay, thank you. I make sense.
Well, you're right, it does need to be done, absolutely.
It's a good problem to have, you have too much traffic.
Especially the square.
Yeah, exactly.
Do we have one now? But I just wanted to add that, on both sides of the street there, it's where their handicap parking is. That's another reason it's really impactful, because of the holes.
I'll make a motion to approve change order number five, and thank you again to Foster's and Exchange Bank for that.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
End of thank you, I also second that.
We sure appreciate it when people like that step up, it really makes it nice. Roll call please.
Bond.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Morel.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes, thank you, Council. Item number 11, consider approval of application for payment number five, final, to Walters Morgan Construction Incorporated pursuant to the schedule of valves on the wastewater treatment plant and flue lift station renovation project in the amount of $17,829.08 pursuant to the certification of Monsignor Consultant City Engineer, acceptance of projects, so long as the work is in accordance with the plans and specifications, and begin the term of the maintenance bond. Okay, this is the lift station out there, and it went bad some time ago, and they come in and got that all put back together. There's one, there's an electrical panel or something that is supposed to be in within the next couple of weeks. The existing keypad is functional, but obviously needs to be replaced for cosmetic reasons. So what we would like to do is, we would like to approve this final payment pending that panel box, or whatever it is, to get put in, so that way we don't have to bring it back to the council, we won't pay them until they get that one last item put in.
I like that it says final.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve payment number five, final one, pending the panel box as described by the mayor.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Bond.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Morel.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes. Thank you. Item number 12, approval of invoice in the amount of $15,279.93 from Utility Technology Services for additional meters and related equipment related to the citywide meter replacement If you had looked at your background on item 12, I was confused why this project just keeps going, and keeps going, and keeps going.
I think we've had this conversation before about...
We haven't seen that word finally yet, Brian. But anyway, so, we called Vernon today. This is just the water meters, this is water meters, okay, this isn't electric meters, this is Vernon's deal. Do you remember back when we had the discussion about water metered lids, the can lids, and getting broke, and who's going to pay for them, and who's not going to pay for them, and we actually did nothing, we tabled that, okay? Vernon has actually ordered a total, he's just, there's invoices in here, for two times he's ordered 50 lids, that's 100, and now he's ordered another 50. So we're at 150 lids that have been broke since that project began. And as a council, we couldn't really come to a decision on how or who we would hold liable for those lids getting broke. Now, these are the lids, if you remember right, that had, they were rebar enforced, and the ones he is ordering now. Vernon did tell me that they taken, and they've got the cast iron lids, the metal lids, and they drilled holes in them to mount the little sensor in there, and which tremendously weakens that lid because they drilled a hole in there. And he said some of those lids, literally someone's stepping on them, they're broke. And so now they've gone to these polymer plastic lids, and they haven't had too much problem with them. But they were drilling, and he told me this, this is amazing, he was telling me that they were drilling those holes in those metal lids, because most of all of our lids were metal to start with, so they were drilling. They could drill somewhere between 10 to 15 lids before they'd have to change the drill bit. Those drill bits are $85 apiece, so I can just imagine what kind of money we spent on that. But there's also wiring, in your background notes, there's some wiring, and asking what the wiring is for. And what happens is, people get curious, so they pull the lid off, and they either pull the wires into, or when they put them back together, the wire gets into the lid and gets smashed, and it's not any good. So then City Hall calls and says this meter's not working, so they go out there, and they found that someone's taken. So at some point, it's not in this item, but at some point, we're going to have to probably put some meat and something to get people leaving things alone. So at some point, we need to review that. Some people run over them with log wars and break them too, and I mean, there's many different things that happen, but anyway...
Well, I think part of it too, we talked about like somewhere in the middle of their driveway, where they're going to always have to drive over them.
Yeah.
So, and we didn't want to move them either, so...
I think that the way I understood it, once they get these new style lids on there, they're a lot more durable.
Yeah.
But, and he's checking in, that when he buys new meter cans, they send it out with the metal lid, that's his standard, you know, what you get, and he's trying to get his vendor to not send lids with it. He just wants the can, and then we can get these other lids and put with them. So he told me he was working on that also. But this is just for the lids and the wiring and stuff that people have kind of been tearing up.
So this would catch us up, right?
I guess.
I mean, basically.
There's another 50 lids that aren't on this.
Right.
So, and I don't remember what it was, right, it's like $1,500 or something for the 50 lids, so...
I think it's towards the end.
Yeah, it's $1,500 for 50 lids. They're $30 apiece. So, what would I like to do with this, Council?
Motion to approve the invoice for $15,279.93 to United Utility Technology Services.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Bond.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Morel.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes, thank you. Item 13, consider approval of payment to Mitre Fire Support Incorporated, LLC, I'm sorry, in the amount of $21,041.56 for vehicle repairs on the fire engine number five and fire engine number six. This is what I was talking to you earlier about, the fire trucks that we had some gearbox issues with. Have you got them all put back together, Chief?
Yes.
Did you get them out in the air stand and use them?
We did, both of them, yes.
And they performed well?
They did.
Well, good. So, and basically, $20,000 of this money is going to be reimbursed back to us through the Malzahn grant, if the grant's approved, which I believe it will be.
Chief, is that just normal wear and tear?
It is.
On equipment?
Yes, sir. We, you know, one of those fire engines is 27 years old, the other one is 16 years old, so they're just getting to that point where these high dollar pieces were worn out and being to replace.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve the invoices for payment.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Bond.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Morel.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Yes. Item 14, consider acceptance of the sanitary sewer easement from the State of Oklahoma Land Commission for the Perry Public School Sanitary Sewer Line Extension. The way I understand it is, we saw this before, correct?
Federal 18.
No.
I don't think it can be counted.
Okay, it didn't come to...
Wages.
Okay, so what happened, somehow it got to, it got to the school. I thought they'd said that we saw it first, but somehow it got to the school, and Terry McCarty, I don't know what it said on it, but for some reason, superintendent signed this and sent it on, which we have to be the one to sign, accept the... So someone messed up on where it went, how it got there, I don't know, but anyway, so this is just accepting the easement for we can put our sewer line in up there at the new school, from the state land commission.
Motion to approve the sewer easement.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Bond.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Morel.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes, thank you. Item 15, consider convening into executive session to discuss the purchase of certain interest in real property, permanent and temporary flowage easement related to the Upper Black Bear Watershed Project pursuant to Title 25, Section 307b.3 for the Oklahoma statutes as amended. And before we do that, I would like to ask Dixie, our city clerk, to stay in the executive session, because she's been involved in this.
Motion to convening to executive session.
Second.
Roll call please.
Bond.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Morel.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes, thank you, Council. Yes, thank you, council. Where are we at? Item 16, reconvene in the regular session.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Bond?
Yes.
Ahern?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Wines?
Yes.
Strowler?
Yes. 17, take any action deemed necessary due to executive session. Seeing none, any new business that needs to come before the council tonight. Seeing none, item 19.